Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for April 8th, 2014. Before we proceed, I'll ask Pastor Mercy Miller from Samuel Lutheran Church to come forward to lead us in brief prayer, all by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we give thanks for a breath of fresh air and springtime weather. We ask that you would give protection to our students during their spring break and keep them safe. We give thanks for those gathered here to give of their time and energy for the improvement of this city. And we ask that the business conducted here might do just that. We ask your blessing upon our nation and upon the armed services that serve our nation. All these things and whatever else you see that we need, we ask, in the name of the Almighty One. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. May we have the roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Here.
Commissioner German.
Here.
Commissioner Rinse Masipiga.
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Galrin.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Everybody's here?
Yes.
That's good. Well, before we begin... Before we get into proceedings, I'd like to recognize a familiar face in the crowd tonight. It's a gentleman that I've really came to know since 1998? 1998? Working on other community activities at the time. He became known to myself and my family. And then later on, got to know him better as he represented the Fourth Estate and the Muskegon Chronicle, covering our proceedings here and getting that good information out to the public. And I think expertly and in a sense of loving dedication exercising his charge to the citizens by upholding a free press and getting the information out there that the citizens need to engage with us here at City Hall and with each other. And with that, I'd like to call up my friend Dave Alexander. Whereas Dave Alexander has served as a reporter in the Muskegon area for 33 years and has reported on government news for the City of Muskegon the past six years. And whereas Dave has taken a new position with MLive Muskegon Chronicle and now serves as the Community Engagement Specialist, now I therefore... Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Galrin, speaking on behalf of the City Commission, express our sincere appreciation for his distinguished service to the community and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities. And we wish him the best and much success in his new endeavors, not for just the sake of his organization, but I know that Dave does his job for the sake of this community. And for that, I love him and stand by him and continue to give him my support as a friend and fellow citizen. Dave, the City of Muskegon presents you with this certificate of recognition for our appreciation. It's the least we can do. And take all of our best wishes and our love and put them in this little bag and carry them around town with you. But truly, from our hearts, thank you for your hard work and best of luck going forward in your new endeavor. Thank you.
It's been six productive years that I've been here. It's been interesting, and I've really enjoyed covering the City of Muskegon. I want to thank Mayor Galrin, the commissioners who are now sitting here, those commissioners that I've worked with in the past, especially former Mayor Warmington. I also like to thank staff, Frank Peterson, Attorney John Schreier. Staff at City Hall has always been professional in their handling of the media. There's also Kathy Reubaker-Clark, Mohamed Al Shattel, Chief Jeff Lewis, Treasurer and Finance Director Derek Smith, and especially for me, Ann Cummings, who is always there to provide information as needed. But there's been former people that I've worked with, Ryan Mizeid, City Manager who's retired, Finance Director Tim Paul, and former Chief of Police Tony Kleibecker. I'm going to be looking forward to a new position, but it's still engaging with you. It's in my title, I guess I need to do that, in the future with city issues, but just in a slightly different way. And finally, I guess I'd like to thank the MLive Chronicle readers for their support and always keeping me on my toes. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request to approve minutes of the March 25th City Commission meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. National Bike to Work Week proclamation, City Clerk, summary request. The City Commission is asked to adopt the proclamation supporting National Bike to Work Week, May 12th through May 16th, 2014. Staff recommendation to approve the proclamation. 2014 Water Treatment Chemical Bids, Public Works, summary request. Recommend endorsement of the lowest responsible bidder to supply sodium hypochlorite for the water filtration plant. Staff recommendation, staff recommends the mayor and City Commission endorse the lower bid, lowest bid received and enter into a contract with Alexander Chemical for sodium hypochlorite for a one-year agreement beginning with April 14th, 2014. Concession vending contract for the City of Muskegon Parks, Public Works, summary request. Staff is asking permission to enter into a one-year contractual agreement with Brandon M. Reed per proposal at Pier Marquette Beach Park and Cruzy Park located within the City of Muskegon for selling bottled water and carbonated beverages. Staff recommendation authorize DPW staff to enter into a concession vending agreement with Brandon M. Reed. J. Boards concession contract for City of Muskegon Parks, Public Works, summary request. Staff is asking permission to enter into a one-year contractual agreement with Jason Gorski of J. Boards per proposal at Pier Marquette Beach and Harbor Town Beach located within the City of Muskegon for standout paddle boards rental lessons. Staff recommendation authorize DPW staff to enter into concession agreement with Jason Gorski of J. Boards. Bella Dog concession contracts for City of Muskegon Parks, Public Works, summary request. Staff is asking permission to enter into a one-year contractual agreement with Steve Hamstra of Bella Dogs at various City of Muskegon parks and facilities as determined by staff located within the City of Muskegon to sell hot dogs and other minor snacks from the mobile cart. Staff recommendation authorize DPW staff to enter in concession agreement with Steve Hamstra of Bella Dogs. Lease proposal of four Mack kiteboarding at Pier Marquette Park, Public Works, summary request. Staff is asking permission to negotiate a three-year lease agreement, 2014, 2015, and 2016 with Steve Negan of Mack Kiteboarding for a kiteboard school and shop in Pier Marquette Park at 1955 Beach Street, former Old Brown Brick Building House building by filtration plant. The negotiations entail in-kind services and/or donation to the Pier Marquette Park facilities in lieu of the standard lease payment and/or a combination of both. Staff recommendation authorize staff to negotiate a three-year lease agreement. Consideration of bids for janitorial services contract, 2014, 2017, engineering, summary request. Award the janitorial services contract to Reliant Professional Cleaning Services out of Grand Haven. The contract would be to clean City Hall and TPW for the next three years, starting May 1st, 2014 until April 30th, 2017. Reliant was the lowest responsible bidder with a bid price of $46,740 per year in a $140,220 total contract for three years. Staff recommendation award the three-year contract to Reliant Professional Cleaning. Aggregates, highway maintenance materials, and concrete, Public Works, summary request. Award the bids as listed. Staff recommendation recommend approval of bids as outlined. Amendment to Brownfield Plan Terrace Point Landing LLC and Downtown Development Authority pass-through agreement, planning economic development. Summary request, the Brownfield Plan for Terrace Point Landing LLC was adopted by the Brownfield Redevelopment Plan and the City Commission in the 2013 for purposes of reimbursing the developer for eligible expenses incurred in association with the project, approximately $12 million investment overall. In addition, the DDA and City Commission approved the amendment of the DDA plan to allow for 100% of the difference between the 1988 assessed value and the 2013 assessed value for that parcel and 25% of any increase in the assessed value beyond the 2013 tax year, parcel being that identified for the Terrace Point Landing LLC project. The BRA plan was forwarded to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC, for review and approval. City staff and the developer were notified the week of March 24th that the MEDC was not recommending their participation in the plan. After several discussions and careful consideration, it was determined that the project can proceed financially without the MEDC participation, providing the BRA tax capture is the full 100%, rather than the 75% originally contemplated. Staff recommendation to endorse the BRA and DDA approvals for the BRA amendment and DDA amendment. Committee recommendation, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and the Downtown Development Authority met on April 2nd, 2014 and approved both the BRA plan amendment and the DDA plan amendment. Permanent Traffic Control Order, Public Works, summary request. Authorize staff to install one-hour parking signs from 8:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., where permissible, to install on Terrace Street, Pine Street, Spring Street, Walton Avenue, and Myrtle Avenue per Traffic Control Work Order 14-2014. Staff recommendation authorize DPW staff to install one-hour parking signs on Terrace Pine Street, Spring Street, Walton, and Myrtle. Muskegon Firefighters Union Contract Settlement, City Manager, summary request. The City and Muskegon Firefighters Union have been working on a five-year agreement for the last two months. We have reached a tentative agreement, and the union had a successful ratification vote in March. Staff recommendation to approve the tentative agreement and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. LC Walker Arena Management Operation Costs, City Manager, summary request. In response to a request from the city's contracted management firm for the LC Walker Arena, city staff has been working on a plan to identify temporary funding to offset high utility costs at the LC Walker Arena. The facility was built as a hockey arena, but its high operation cost cannot be sustained by one main hockey tenant alone. City staff is asking the commission to approve a one-year agreement with the management company to provide assistance with utilities effective April 1st, 2014 and expiring March 31st, 2015, with stipulations as follow. An increase in the ticket surcharge equal to $1 effective for the 2014-2015 lumberjacks hockey season with a proceeds dedicated 50/50 to electricity and capital maintenance. City to reimburse the management company 75% of the net utility costs each month, up to $15,000 monthly. Management company to provide city with 20 tickets to each home game for the city to use to invite Muskegon youth to the hockey games. Inclusive of all surcharges, the city will be responsible for a payment of $3 for each ticket. A plan to be presented to the City Commission prior to December 31st, 2014 outlining the long-term viability of the LC Walker Arena with a recommendation from staff related to the best long-term use of the facility. The city reserves the right to terminate this agreement within 30 days' notice. Staff recommendation to approve the request and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. 2014-2015 City Commission Goals, Action Plan, City Manager.
Thank you.
I was going to. Can I give a staff recommendation on that one? And staff recommendation for the goals, to adopt the action plan and direct the city staff to begin the process of sharing the plan with the public and prepare for implementation.
Thank you again. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you would like to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Turnquist?
Item G.
Commissioner Johnson, please?
Item M.
Item?
LC Walker Arena Management Operation Costs?
Item N. And item C.
Vice Mayor?
I also wanted item C.
Thank you. Any others? If not, entertain a motion.
H, too.
Yes. I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items C, D, G, H, M, N, O, P. Was it E?
E.
Then I misheard. I thought he said D, so it's not D, it's E? E as in Edgar Allan Poe? Okay, so, once again, items C, E, G, H, M, N. Motion.
I would move we adopt the consent agenda minus the items just read by the mayor.
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor and seconded by everybody else. No, I'll pick...
Go ahead.
Commissioner Johnson to accept the consent agenda as presented minus items C, E, G, H, M, N, N. And we'll start at... You were the first one, I believe? Commissioner Turnquist?
I make a motion...
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm all befuddled because of all this yanking. Go ahead, let's have a roll call.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinse Masipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that's why we have bill of the law. That's true. Commissioner Turnquist?
I would make a motion that we authorize staff to negotiate a three-year lease agreement with Mack Kiteboarding at Pier Marquette Park.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Vice Mayor, to authorize the staff to negotiate a three-year lease agreement with Mack Kiteboarding at Pier Marquette Park. Commissioner?
The only reason I bring that up because I just love the activity that they bring to our beach. But over this past year, maybe longer than that, we occasionally get a complaint that the beach is blocked by that activity, and on a big day, it causes a problem. I don't know whether we can work that out. I still, you know, want it there, but just a question, Paul.
Good evening.
Good evening. Al Shattel?
We did recognize that problem, and we talked about it last year, and we had moved some up along the beach. We had moved those cones and ropes up a little bit, and we continue to work with them just to make sure that we're, you know, we're giving them what they need because they need that direct access, if you will, but also accommodate the beach cover, so we will continue to work.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on this item? G, Mack Kiteboarding? Not? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rinse Masipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Who had item C? Vice Mayor?
I would move that we approve the bids for the... With Alexander Chemical for the sodium hydrochloride for the one year beginning April 14th, 2014.
Second.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Rinse Masipiga, to endorse the low bid received by Alexander Chemical for sodium hypochlorite for one year beginning April 14th, 2014 for the water treatment filtration plan. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, particularly in lieu of our discussion later this evening regarding our action plan based on our goals, our financial situation, and so on, that this is one of those things that nobody thinks about. This is one of those things that people just expect you turn the tap and the water comes on. But since I've been on this commission, the price of this product has more than tripled. And obviously, we have to pass that cost on to the ratepayers for the water system. And that's true with many of these products, where we have to patch the streets, we have to make sure the water's safe to drink, we have to provide these services, and yet the raw materials necessary to perform those functions have continually gone up in price, even though our resources to obtain those have continually gone down. And that's just a reality. And when we look at things like the contract for our firefighters and, you know, 1% pay raises and so on, the lack of staffing to perform the functions we were doing just a few years ago, the cost of these kind of raw materials is part of it. And this is bidding through a consortium. This is a West Michigan consortium. This is the cheapest way we're going to get this material. But we're paying three times what we were a decade ago. Thank you.
Commissioner German?
Hey, my question about this is getting this sodium hydrochloride, with that having an effect on the pricing for water with other municipalities actually getting ready to join the City of Muskegon. So how will we offset that cost?
Only your water rate is going to go up. The rest is not. No, it's... The cost of those chemicals were anticipated in the budget when we prepared it, so it's... I mean, we anticipated some increases here and there, so no, there is no rate increase proposed because of this. Absolutely not.
Except a particular Sanford Street address.
If you give me the address afterward.
Hey, all right, just charge it to my bill. I eat the cost.
Any other comments or questions on that item? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinse Masipiga?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I have a motion on item E, so Mr. Al Shattel can address this.
I would move that we authorize the DPW staff to enter into a concession agreement with Jason Gorski of J. Boards?
Second. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to authorize DPW staff to enter into a concession agreement with Jason Gorski of J. Boards. Mr. Al Shattel?
Thank you. Once again, the Clerk's office made another mistake in here, and in the summary of requests, the correction that was just brought to my attention, as you may have seen me walk out of the chamber when the meeting began, is the negotiation is for three years instead of one year. If you would allow that change, we would appreciate it very much.
And we won't hold it against you.
Well, since the motion was to enter into a concession agreement, and that agreement is for three years, I assume that's covered under the motion, so is that correct?
Yes, sir. We're covered. Any comments or questions on that? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinse Masipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I believe item H was yours.
Yes. Motion to award a three-year contract to Reliant Professional Cleaning.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to award the three-year contract to Reliant Professional Cleaning for janitorial services. Commissioner German?
Okay, my reasoning for bringing this topic up is because we talked yesterday about supporting our own business owners and our community, and I'd like to know how many contractors actually bidded on this, and were there any from the Muskegon area? And I feel strongly about supporting our local business contractors here, so if any did apply, I'd like to know, you know, did they apply and why didn't they receive the contract?
Mr. Al Shattel?
Well, the contract... I believe we had four contractors or five contractors that picked up the contracts itself to consider and maybe bid on them. Four, I believe, that attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting, and three that submitted the bids, as you see in the tabulation attached to the agenda item. The only contractor that is... Their offices is within the City of Muskegon, to the best of my knowledge, is true clean. And I think they're located at 450... Well, it says that. 450 West Hackley, on the north side of Hackley, just on the city's borderline. But as you can see, their bid is more than the 1% allowed by this body.
Is it 1% or 2%? 1%. 1%?
Yes. They're above the 1% allowable. That's why we recommended the low bid for you.
And have we done business with this contractor before?
True clean?
Yeah.
No.
No, the one, Reliant.
Yes, we have been doing business with them for the last probably 12 years, 13 years.
Okay, they're actually doing the cleaning as of now. Okay, never knew who they were. Okay, all right. Talk to them all the time. Okay.
Oh, you're the person that did complaining about them all.
Hey, they do a good job, so, okay. Just making sure. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Matt, roll call, please.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinse Masipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I believe item M was Commissioner Johnson?
Given that we're waiting to get a complete accounting of LC Walker Arena's utility costs, I move to postpone consideration of this agreement until April 22nd.
I'm sorry, I missed it. What'd you say?
Given that we're waiting to receive a full accounting of the utility costs, I move that we postpone consideration of this agreement till April 22nd.
Vice Mayor?
If there's no second for that, then I would move that we proceed to approve the request and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the subsequent agreement.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to approve the request and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. This is in regard to the LC Walker Arena Management Operation Costs. Commissioner Johnson?
We were greeted by Rob Murphy, Ian Van Der Brook, and Pam Wilson last night, and I appreciate them coming out last night and answering our questions, providing us some information. Last night, we were told that we'd received the remaining utility costs today. We've not received that. We also were told we were going to receive the attendance figures today, and we've not received that. That's why I made my original motion to postpone it, and it's a bit disturbing that we would consider this agreement without having the full facts of the situation, that we do not have all the utility costs for the previous year at hand, nor do we have the attendance figures or... So that's my comments for now.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner.
How are you?
I have received some of the attendance figures for the last year in paper form, so I can... so I can forward those on to the Commissioners if you like those. But I'd have to scan those in. Otherwise, I can summarize them in a summary sheet, if you will.
Did we receive the outstanding information on consumers' energy monthly bills today?
No, we have not.
No. Which is the biggest portion of their utility cost, correct?
Right.
Any other comments or input? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I certainly share Commissioner Johnson's concern. You know, we were asked to kick in more on a facility that costs us $235,000 a year in a management fee. I remember when we entered into that agreement originally, and that fee has not changed in over a decade now. We all know, thanks to the Public Service Commission, our electric rates have gone up by more than 30% during that same period of time. I'm sure the attendance figures will confirm that during that time, the attendance from the professional lumberjacks was around 3,200 a game approximately. To now, I'm guessing it's probably around 2,000 a game. And I don't know what the difference in ticket prices are off the top of my head, but that comes into play, too. So clearly, there's an issue. This is not a sustainable building without a primary tenant. The cost of mothballing this building without a primary tenant is not going to be any cheaper. And quite frankly, might be more expensive. And we all know that empty buildings start deteriorating fairly quickly, even if you've mothballed them and keep the utilities active and so on. Now, we just have to be honest with ourselves on this. No one operates sports teams out of altruism. They may have a passion, they may be willing to subsidize that passion, but ultimately, if that business is not operating at a break-even or positive cash flow basis, even an altruist will eventually run out of money. And so it's important for us to recognize that that tenant has to be sustainable, just as the building has to be sustainable. We know that this building, even without the precise electric bill numbers based on history, is running a deficit. And we've been asked to help in this way as a one-time stopgap, so we can negotiate terms of a more sustainable agreement, so we can maintain hockey in this town, and we can keep this building, which is in its 54th year, as an asset to this community. And part of that discussion's going to include what happens with the outcome of the Conventions Center study that's currently underway, and whether or not we can regionalize, as they've done with the Kobo Center in Detroit, some of the costs of maintaining this regional asset through the hotel room fee, which has already been discussed, and there does seem to be some support for that. So I think as a stopgap measure to get us through the rest of this year while we iron out those details, as we spent a lot of time discussing yesterday, this is a reasonable action for us to take. And I'm willing to support it, even without the current monthly electric bill. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, I just had one comment. I think last night we talked, I remember asking about if we were going to see another agreement, if this was just agreeing to the principles. And I thought we were going to see a full agreement. I don't really have a problem with authorizing the mayor and the clerk to sign an agreement based on these principles, but I would hope it would stick pretty close to this. I would, agreements, you can always put different things in there. I just would want it to stay close to this. But given that, beyond that, I, you know, I basically agree with Commissioner Spataro that at this point, I think this is the best course to take with the arena. And it's an agreement to reimburse them up to a certain amount. So what the utility bill is, is if it's not up to that amount, then we won't reimburse them anymore. So I'm comfortable with that, though.
Actually, the city turned this off, Matt, this morning, and we talked about the agreement. He's going to get that put together. With the exact same terms here.
Okay.
Anything else? Commissioner?
Question, speaking of the terms, the proceeds of the surcharge being dedicated 50-50 electricity and capital maintenance, will those proceeds be applied first and then the reimbursement happen thereafter on the remaining balance?
Yep, that's the plan.
Okay. And this is 75% per month, yes, net utility cost each month. I value LC Walkerina. It's a public asset that we support to the tune of $235,000 per year. As Vice Mayor Spataro noted, it's been static for a while. However, the company that came in, the Fower and Friedman Brothers that bought Blue Ox LLC, which holds the franchise to the hockey team, and Lager Hockey LLC, sister company that is our contracted manager for this arena, fully understood this contract when they came in to possession of these companies. And that contract, let me stipulate for my fellow Commissioners that may not have read the entirety of it, states the management fee shall be the sole compensation to the manager by the city. And the manager shall pay all the expenses contemplated by this contract without further payments from the city. Now, I don't categorically object to providing any additional support to this arena manager. To the tune, to the potential tune of $180,000 is a little bit too much to bear, especially when our city is facing an $800,000-plus deficit this year. And it's expected, currently expected to grow in ensuing years, potentially depleting our fund balance to zero. And handing out $180,000 within the next year brings us all that much closer to a zero balance. So I personally would feel more comfortable. I felt reassured by LC Walkerina management team coming last night. I feel a little better about the team in place. And they acknowledged some of the gaps in the past in terms of events happening there. And they're going to be much more proactive about that. And they're doing a rebranding initiative. So I feel much better about the team in place currently. And I feel that they will be successful, thereby needing less public support in ensuing years. But to the tune of $180,000, I would feel much more comfortable if I actually saw the remaining utility costs. We got gas figures, we got water figures, and we got partial electricity. We do not get full for the past year of utilities. In fact, for the past 14 months, 16 months, we do not have utility figures for Consumers Energy. And so it's kind of hard to say we're going to reimburse you to 75% without having any idea what the previous year's utility costs were. Yes, it's capped, but it makes a difference when we're talking about 75%. To make me feel a little bit more comfortable, since we're not going to be postponing this, despite lacking all the details, I would move that we amend this to...
There's a...
I move to amend this to cap it at $10,000 per month, respectfully.
I see no second.
Wow.
Any further discussion? Matt, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsipasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquess?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Going forward, if you will accept Commissioner Johnson, I'd ask you to be the commission liaison to act with the manager and staff during the course of the viability study that will be taking place between now and December.
Happily.
Thank you. Item N?
Okay. There's no recommendation on that.
Yeah, there was a recommendation to accept.
Okay, okay. 2014-15 City Commission Goals Action Plan, accept.
As presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This has been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by Commissioner Hood to accept the 2014-2015 City Commission Goals and Action Plan as presented.
Okay, as this was brought up on the agenda yesterday, I didn't get a chance to stay because, due to night school. So I appreciate you guys excusing me. But I'd just kind of like to get an update where we are, you know, when it comes to implementing this. I just kind of looked over the actual goals, and I'm really excited about the goals and what we're doing. I'd just like to see them come into fruition. You know, we've been shelling out a lot of cash and, you know, been really business-friendly. You know, we've got a lot of projects going on with the SAPY, the development at the Terrace Point, the heritage area. And I just want to see a return on our investments. But it would be good to see some of these goals, you know, actually happening and, you know, coming into existence. So I just kind of wanted to recap on where are we, you know, when it comes to, you know, actually...
Yeah, I think for the most part, we're ready to get started on a lot of these. A lot of these, I think, are, I don't want to call them long-term group, but a lot of them, I think we can get started on right away with dedicated staff time. But then other ones, especially related to the long-term finance plan and road funding, are going to take a little more time to flesh out and get public input on and get those implemented. But as far as, you know, beginning the process of moving some of those private developments along that you see in the first one, creating a plan for accountability when people receive tax payments and incentives to invest in the community, putting together a plan for the farmer's market site, starting to address neighborhood blight, working on the beach warning system, developing opportunities for youth from employment and recreation standpoint, and then starting to improve our image. Those are things that we can start putting assets towards right away. And there are a number of things we listed in there throughout here. And we can make this plan available, obviously, and we will, on our website and available if people want hard copies of it. But I think there's a number of ways in here that's outlined where we can plan on getting started right away and start seeing some of this stuff have immediate impact. Absolutely.
Okay, for this, just say, within the next four months, could the community look forward to seeing some type of project for this construction with, just say, the farmer's market site? And getting our youth involved also. And when our youth are being employed, this plan that we have for them, I'd like to see youth within our city, within our municipality. I know there's other youth that may, you know, you know, request jobs. But I'd like to see the youth here, you know, in this city, you know, be rewarded for their hard work in the city and stuff. They are...
Yeah, absolutely. On the very last page, I kind of put a little section there on accountability and how I hope to kind of hold us accountable to working towards, you know, towards accomplishing each of the goals. And essentially, the three things I put in there is, one, getting assignments of the responsibilities for each of these action plans, for each of these tasks, given monthly updates to the commission, likely at the work sessions as a plan. And then also given explanations of how the actions that we're asking you guys to take here and there on certain things, how those would either negatively or positively affect our ability to meet those goals. So if we bring something to you and it's directly related to a goal, we'll make sure that that's listed in the recommendation and how that would affect the goals. And that way, when people are seeing what we're doing, they'll understand why we're making a step in one direction or the other. And it'll be guided by what we're seeing here.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Additionally, when it came to long-term financial planning and resource development to address our long-term goals as far as infrastructure needs, paying the monthly bills between now and death, we've determined to begin planning on taking our Community Relations Committee, basically, on the road to make presentations out within the community on, especially the financial aspects, but all aspects of our goals that we set this year together, so...
I think that's a good idea, engaging the community and making them aware.
And in addition to that, I'll make sure I get out and staff gets out and commissioners, when they can, get out to different neighborhood meetings and business community meetings and make sure that everybody has a chance to understand it here directly from us, the direction that we're trying to take here.
All right. Thank you. Sounds good.
Mr. Turquess?
I'm a little confused, and I talked to Frank. We're accepting the plan as our roadmap of where we want to go. We're not saying yes to every specific item. Like, you know, you mentioned parking meters at Pierre Marquette. You can't go out tomorrow and put in parking meters, can you?
No, no.
Just adopting the plan.
It's exactly like you said. This is a roadmap. And what I'm asking you guys to do is give me permission to use this as my roadmap as I start getting out there and bringing ideas to you, just so I have a good roadmap to follow, you know, as I bring things to you and as staff brings things to you.
Howard, I think they will be putting those parking meters up in Harbor Town beginning next week.
Go for it. They'll be down the next day.
Any other comments?
I was just going to say, I think that's a good point for people who are going to get this and read that, that it's a plan. As my uncles, who served in the military, would tell you that all plans immediately become useless as soon as you make contact with the enemy. But if you don't have a plan, you don't have a hope. And so this is a plan. So as we move forward, it'll get adjusted. As we listen to people, and as Frank just outlined, the process of making sure we listen to people, there'll be adjustments to this. But if we don't have a guideline moving forward, how do you accomplish anything? So I'm real excited that we've actually taken this level of detail to develop action plans off of our goals. We've always seen follow-through, but I think putting it down as a roadmap like this will be a useful tool as we move forward over the next few years. We'll be able to look at this next year when we do our goal setting, hold ourselves accountable. And, you know, and we all need to be flexible. There may be things that are important to me or to any commissioner that we may need to be flexible on because the community's going in a different direction, and we need to respect that. So I'm with you with that. Commissioner Turquess, I do think that we need to make it clear that this is a guideline and not something set in concrete. Thank you.
And that was my concern. I agree with you, Vice Mayor. You know, looking at how we will prioritize, you know, which goals need to be met as, you know, we, you know, prioritize them one by one. And it's good to have a plan, but, you know, the plan, you know, you want to see the end result. And, you know, I'd like to see something completed, you know, not just something, but actually, if we can do them all, that would be great. But that may not be the case, I'm quite sure. But, you know...
Depending on the weather.
Yeah, yeah, so... Thank you.
We'll work it. We'll work it hard. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. What else we got here? Any other business? Nope, those have been closed. Any input or comment from the public before we leave for the evening and rejoin our families and have a slice of toast? Matt? Commissioner Hood?
There's nothing else. I move to adjourn.
It's been moved by Commissioner, seconded by Commissioner Rizasipiga, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we stand adjourned? Can adjourn? That's important. Yes. Yes. Do everybody first.[1730.33]